Glad to see you for your interest in the county government and everything. We've got some more to say here in just a few minutes, but we're going to call our meeting to order. And I'm going to ask Supervisor Jamison Marshall if you'll do the invocation, and Supervisor Mitchell Nick if you'll do the pledge to the floor. Will y'all stand with us please?
I'd like to just thank all of you coming out also. It means a lot to board to see everybody here and taking interest in it. Let's pray. Dear Lord, just come to you tonight and just ask your blessings upon this time we spend together, Lord, trying to do the county's business. We ask for your guidance, your wisdom, Lord. May everything said and done be to your glory. Lord, we thank you for your saving grace, Lord, and we just give you all the praise and glory. In Jesus' name we ask you, amen.
All right, just to let everybody know what's going on tonight, we're going to have a public hearing tonight based upon the proposed tax rates. And there'll be some slides. There will not be, the board will not make a decision tonight because by code, we have to wait seven days. So that will be done at our next board meeting next Tuesday. But we will listen, and we will listen to each and every one of you tonight. If you've got comment, each and every one of you will get your three minutes there for your comment on all of that for tonight. And again, I want to thank each and every one of you for your interest in your county government. I've seen these be where the room was packed and nobody here to sit, no place to sit. It was standing room only. And then I've seen it where there wasn't hardly anyone here. And it pleases me to see that people are interested in their county and where things are going. So I will open each one of the three here separately, and anyone wishing to speak will have an opportunity to do so when promptly during each meeting. Please let me also remind you that each speaker is limited to three minutes. Speakers must direct all comments to the board as a whole and not to individual board members or employees of the board or the county. Personal attacks and insulting, profane, or vulgar language will not be tolerated. Likewise, commentary on issues that are not within the purview of the board and that are not a function of the local government over which we have no control are not acceptable. Public comment is a question, is not a question and answer session, and board members will not answer questions. If a speaker violates these rules, the chairman may rule the speaker out of order, and upon the second violation, have the speaker removed from the podium. So now we will go into our public hearing. First, on the agenda of the public hearing on our proposed 2526 budget previously advertised, Mr. Whitlow, would you like to take over and start things off, please?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This evening you have before you, as the chairman has already noted, three required public hearings, one public hearing being on the proposed FY 2526 budget, the other being on the tax property rates, tax levies, and then also a proposed meals tax increase this evening. So there are three public hearings, and I've asked Mr. Chairman Brian Carter, Deputy County Administrator and CFO, to give us a summary. I know it's been a while. We've had some work sessions from the board of when we initially presented the budget back on March the 11th. And of course, that, all budget materials are posted on the county's website, including the initial budget presentation. I think it goes without saying this year, as we've discussed, revenues have moderated significantly from prior years, primarily two areas really from an operational standpoint, from inflationary pressures, but moreover, the continued work that we have on the structural capital imbalance of our ongoing maintenance capital requirements for the county. So that's been an overarching theme that, Mr. Chairman, you and members of the board that you've seen during the budget process or in our work sessions. And so we thought it would be very helpful if Mr. Carter, there are some things that have occurred since we proposed the budget on March the 11th. So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'll let Mr. Carter walk the board through those.
I'm sorry, go ahead, sir. So just to provide an overall summary of what was proposed and presented to the board supervisors at your March, in March, the proposed budget does propose to increase the real estate tax rate by one cent to 44 cents. It also proposes to increase the meals tax from 4% to 6%. The other tax rates would remain unchanged. So as initially proposed, the total budget would be $185.2 million. That's about a 3.58% increase over the prior year. So that's barely above the rate of inflation that you see in the overall general economy. Structurally measured budget is, it does balance modest new revenue with ongoing capital and operational expenses, and continues to address the capital imbalance that we see with our normal replacement. Does plan for upcoming operational needs, as we know, the grants will be ending in the next two or three years with the school resource officers. The county will need to pick up 100% of that cost at that time. And then the normal maintenance of effort, there are mandated funds, whether that's state or federal mandates. There are other inflationary increases that this budget seeks to fund. It maintains existing county services. There were no cuts in services proposed in the budget at this time. There were no new positions added, and it did fund the 3% cost of living increase that state-supported local employees would be receiving across the board. So what has changed between what was proposed and the advertised budget, since the budget was proposed to the board, there was since a health insurance savings. If you remember, we had that discussion. So with the, going to a new health insurance plan, that would save approximately $1 million out of the budget. And so that would have been an operational savings that staff looked at. So that's, that has changed since the proposed budget. Also, as we went through subsequent work sessions, there was discussion of advertising an additional penny increase to the real estate tax. So instead of one penny, there were two pennies that were advertised. So if you tried to take your proposed budget booking compared to the ad, those would be mostly the differences that you would see. If we keep either of those, the million dollars in savings or the million with the extra penny of real estate, that would be $2 million variance from what was proposed. So there would be additional discussion needed, of course, from the board and the ultimate adopted budget as to what would that money fund. And so mainly the pressing needs are those couple bullet points there, which of course is capital needs for county and schools, or additional funding enhancements, whether that there are additional operational needs the board sees in the county, or whether that would be also for the school system. So to break it down, these were the overall summary numbers that were in the advertisement. So the proposed revenue synopsis is, if you notice, it's $1 million higher than the proposed budget at a subtotal of $186,193,373. And so the, and then between funds, there's another 52 million, which is funding the school system, funding other things. You count them twice if you don't take that out. That's why the net number is 186 million. And so the only real change on this is under general property taxes, there's an extra million from a penny of real estate. The rest of the numbers would categorically look the same that they saw, you saw in your proposed budget. So on the expenditure, the same categories are there. If you remember, you see increases in public safety, and that was a proposal that the board approved to fund increased salaries for firing EMS and also our law enforcement or sheriff's office, prioritizing public safety, emergency response. So you do see a little bit higher percentage increase there. Health and welfare is where your social services, your CSA, a lot of mandated costs that we as a locality have very little control over, that is driving 11% of the overall budget of the increase. And so the rest, you see 53% for schools. And so your total, the only real difference in this, what you saw was in capital outlay. For the sake of having a placeholder for the additional $1 million, we just put it in capital outlay at this point until decisions were made on what the tax rates would be, and ultimately what we would, where we would reallocate that money if we needed to. So total revenue and expenditures as advertised, these are the categorical revenue and expenditures we would expect to see at this point. So to break it down a little further, and I think the board has seen pretty much these items, these slides previously, but there'd be approximately $1 million in new revenue per penny of real estate that proposed. You can see the tax rate there. You can see we're by far the lowest in our surrounding localities, with the exception of Bedford County. And we've discussed that with the moratorium on school funding because of the conversion of the city of Bedford to a town, why some of that tax rate is a little lower. So looking at what the impact of a penny would be, just so there's some ability to kind of comprehend what that impacts, we certainly look at the household budget. We all, we all know, we all pay our taxes. We all live in this county, and so we know the impact that it has. So on an average home assessed at $250,000, a penny of real estate would equate to $25 a year, $2.08 a month. And so for us, when we look at that, that, as you spread it out, that would be the average impact. Of course, two pennies increases that. That basically is $50 or $4 a month. And so that would be the impact on the penny. So for meals, we propose going from 4% to 6%. That was authorized a couple of years ago by the General Assembly to allow counties to do this. And so one of the things is that, to be clear of is, that does not impact the businesses in the towns of Rocky Mountain and Boone's Mill. We are not allowed to assess meals taxes within town limits. In fact, the town of Rocky Mountain increased their meals tax to 6% previously, and the town of Boone's Mill is 5%. So one of the things to look at is, it provides a little bit more equitable tax structure because we're already below, I don't think residents of the town are seeking out into the county so they could get, save a percent or two on their meals tax. But the other option is that it also captures revenue from non-residents, which would be anything along the 220 corridor that they stop that's not in town limits. Of course, you would have any visitors to Faram College, visitors to the lake, areas like that where you're going to have necessarily non-residents, depending on the time of year coming in. That would capture and help spread the tax burden out as opposed to putting it all on the property owners. So the, just another table to look at the impact on that. So if you had a $50 meal, you had a family outing at Wendy's, something like that, that would be about an extra dollar on the bill with the additional 2%, okay? So that, that's the overall summary, very quick, of where we have been from the proposed budget, what changes were in the advertised, and what some of those options that would be that were either proposed or were in the advertised in some of our discussions. So if you happen to answer any questions or maybe anything you have before public hearings start?
Does anybody, any of the board members here got any questions for Brian? You understand where we're at? All right. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
We're going to try to have, make sure everybody has plenty of time to talk and to say what they're going to say. So there'll probably be some redundancy here. Give everybody their three minutes to talk and do that. And we're probably going to have three hearings, one on each one of them, for the budget, set in the budget, for the meals tax, and for the tax rate itself. So with that being said, what I, the statement I read earlier about having the three minutes and addressed to the board as a whole and not pick out individuals, and it's not going to be a question and answer thing. Madam Clerk, you got anyone signed up?
For the budget, I have Oscar Pagans.
Mr. Pagans? If you'll come forward, please, and state your name and address for the record. Oscar Pagans. I don't see him here. What'd he say?
Went to the liquor store.
William Ferguson.
William Ferguson?
My name is William Ferguson, and I reside at 150 Hodge Lane in Rocky Mountain. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, thank you for allowing me this opportunity. Mr. Chairman, would you be so kind as to allow me five minutes, since I have several other individuals in the audience who are willing to allow me to speak? I believe this has been the process historically.
Are you speaking for a group of people?
Yes, sir. I think if they could raise their hand.
How many, how many folks are here that, okay, so that it's okay for Mr. Ferguson to speak for you, and you're not coming, coming up? Okay. Yes, sir. You got your five minutes.
All right. Thanks, sir. As you may recall, I spoke at the March 18 meeting, and my microphone was shut off at exactly three minutes. And while I understand this is the rule, many speakers have been allowed a minute or two to complete their comments. And over six years of attending these meetings, or actually almost every one of them, I never recall a speaker's microphone being cut off. And I'd just like to pick up where I left off the last time. I want to thank you for recommending a 3% pay increase for the career staff of public safety. They deserve even more. But what about the volunteers? It appears there's no recommendation for stipend increase, nor any increases in the proposed budget. Why not provide an equal increase, or they consider less valuable? It is beginning to appear that way. In addition to the approximately $1.5 million already proposed for the public safety departments in the upcoming budget, they've also received FEMA AFG grants of 300, I mean, I'm sorry, of $438,000 in January of '23 and $218,000 in August of 2024. What percentages of these funds were allocated to the volunteer departments? Do we even know? Public Safety Administration stated many times that these grants are not regional grants, which is correct. However, these grants were not applied for regionally, but were filled out as county of Franklin grants. Regional grants require multiple jurisdictions to sign off. These did not. It was also presented to the board of supervisors that input was received from all county volunteer fire departments as part of the process. That assumption appears to be incorrect. Can we all agree there's a problem here? Do we see the pattern this, that is developing? Do we think that the volunteers can continue to operate and save the county millions of dollars if this is allowed to continue? It appears that the current public safety leadership intends on destroying the combination public safety system for an all-career system. The board of supervisors had advertised a proposed 2-cent tax increase on real estate and a 2-cent increase in meals tax. This was done after the county administrator only proposed a 1-cent tax increase. Instead of a tax increase on citizens during this time of tariffs and inflations, why not instead take action to collect taxes from 24,342 delinquent tax accounts? And that came straight off of your website, that there's 24,000, over 24,000 delinquent tax accounts out there. And I don't understand why, if we're not collecting what's out there, that raising the taxes is going to be any good. And many of these are county employees that are listed there. I have been provided a written document that lists 18 full-time providers, eight part-time providers. These are career staff who have resigned since April the 7th, 2024. In speaking with these folks, the reason most employees have given is low morale and current leadership, not pay issues. I also understand that the Director of Public Safety is attempting to decrease or even eliminate the current $12 call stipend. Is that true? We should be increasing, not decreasing. As of this date, the total budget to pay stipends for the upcoming fiscal year has not been increased, and several departments have already answered over half of their normally annual calls in just two months. I think we can all agree that recruiting volunteers in today's environment is an astronomical task. Why is the Director of Public Safety adding increased stipulations for volunteer firefighters to respond? Are you aware that he is requiring firefighter one to provide any type of fire suppression? This includes structures, woodlands, vehicles, et cetera. Many departments have important personnel to provide invaluable functions, along with many years of experience that will be eliminated if this occurs. It is my understanding, and I do clarify this with the Department of Forestry, that full-time employees of the Department of Forestry are not required to have firefighter one. Yet, there are state employees that are obligated to suppress wildland fires, but we won't require volunteers to have it. Volunteer staff have been operating under the Commonwealth of Virginia laws that do not require firefighter one. The volunteer fire chiefs agree that firefighter one should be obtained for those perform an interior firefighting. However, non-certified firefighters are critical to the system in order to operate outside fires. Most of the members obtain on-the-job experience and in-house training. As a final point, is that the volunteers do not seem to have a voice with the board, and I'm trying to be that voice, not only for the volunteers, but for all staff, career and volunteer, most importantly, our citizens who have been affected by the current state of Franklin County Fire and EMS. How do the volunteers get the board's attention? How does career staff get the board's attention? These meetings can be stressful, and some of the volunteer, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson. Madam Clerk, you got anyone else?
Rain Pecor. I'm not sure if I'm saying that last name right.
So are we on the budget part?
Yes, ma'am. We're still on the budget.
Okay. I heard somebody say something about if they had $1 million and they moved it to a general account. What's that mean?
It will be explained.
That doesn't make any sense. I know you guys aren't going to give me any answers, but...
Ma'am, I need you to state your name and address, please.
My name is Rain Pecor. 24 East College Street, Rocky Mountain.
Thank you.
But anyway, that doesn't make any sense, how you had extra million dollars, you raised them something by a million, and you took the million dollars and put it in a general fund. That really doesn't make any sense. I also wonder about the budget surplus. You guys have had a budget surplus, but all of a sudden you're raising everything again. You got me real good last year. Kicked up big time on the property tax, and it, for no good reason, nothing changed. That doesn't make any sense. For five years, America's been struggling. Y'all are doing fine, but we're working hard, barely making it. Elderly people are really having a time, and you're going up on everything. Let's tighten our belts. Now, I saw, we had that thing uptown, and all the vehicles were brand-new, four-wheelers and the trucks and everything. You guys got plenty of money. You don't need no more from us. All those vehicles they're running around in, four-wheelers, all brand, chrome wheels. Seriously. Doesn't make any sense. And I can also help you find some more money. Whoever paved Fairmountain Road, they did a terrible job. Get a refund, because it's, that road is rotten. If you paid for that job, it's a waste of money, and that's what you're apparently doing all the time. And don't increase these taxes for people no more like this. Am I talking about the taxes in the budget?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Property taxes. Veterans get a deal or a break on their property taxes if they're in the Gulf War or since. To me, that doesn't make any sense. Why would you exclude older veterans, people that have been in Vietnam, Korea, or World War II? That doesn't make a lick of sense. They have the smallest income, and they don't get a break. That needs to be reevaluated, big time. I'm probably, I'm doing pretty good. I made my point, I believe. But I still am really wondering, million dollars, raising something by a million, he's got a million here, but I'm just going to put it in the general fund. Doesn't make any sense. We need to tighten our belts, everybody. Americans have had to do it, and you guys got to put a cap on it. Stop buying new stuff. And when you buy flags, buy American. Thank you.
I have no one, I have no one else signed up for the budget hearing.
Is there anyone else here wishes to speak to the budget hearing? To the budget hearing? We're going to have another one in a minute on the tax rate, and then another one on the meals tax. This is just on the budget. Come forward, sir.
I thought I put my signature on the...
State your name and address for the record, please.
Thomas McDevitt, 71 Moonlight Cove, Union Hall. I cannot understand why we're up in taxes when you're buying properties that you don't need to buy.
Yes.
And I saw, I saw last week on the news thing that you were, you were going to spend for another piece of property. When you've got $100 million park sitting out there, sitting there, all it gets used for is drag racing. There should be five restaurants on that road. And I do not understand why we don't have more restaurants in this town to pick up some of the stuff and more businesses in this town. That industrial, we got five other industrial parks in this area too, and they're all, you give them all away. And I, I just, I just cannot get through it, and I just, I'm going to say, no, don't spend anymore. Don't increase our taxes. I live on a fixed income, and I don't know what you want my property to, but it's, it's an illudial deed, so I'd like to see you come and try to take it, so. And we need to bring back the tar and feathering when, and we'll see how that goes over well. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else here wishes to speak on the budget?
Doug Davidson, 265 Cove Drive. As far as the budget goes, you know, with the business where you have an individual owner or corporate owner, if you have an increase of expenses, you raise your prices. If you have too many people, you lay some off. But I've noticed in Franklin County, and with all counties actually, you never lay anybody off, you never reduce your manpower. So I would help you set up a better tax rate than what you have, and raising the taxes on everybody is not the way to go. Just because you can, doesn't mean you should. So if you need help formulating a budget where you're not giving everybody everything and buying property you don't need with empty office park and empty fields, please let me know, because I'd be more than happy to stop by and talk to you. So, having said that, you know, I appreciate what you do, but honestly, what's the, you need to take a look at what the average salary is for the people that live in this county, and then when you're charging them. So there's a definite disconnect with salaries on the high end and all the people that are retiring to the leg. So you definitely need to figure a way to not overtax the people that have been here for more than 20 years. And finally, you know, that's a nice presentation that he put in with the tax out of 1%, $250,000 house. But the way the appraisals went last year, I went from having a $250,000 house and property to over $700,000. So where does that 1% come in and affect me? So I'm with the other gentleman who's, you know, thinks you're trying to tax him out of his property. Thank you very much for your time, and have a good evening.
Last call. Anyone else? All right, we'll close the public hearing on the budget. Brian, you want to come back on the tax rate? You done, you done talked everything on that? All right, then we'll, the tax rate that was for, is previously 43 cent and proposed to go up to 45 cent. It doesn't mean that we're going there, it just can. We can go up, we can always go up, but we can't come down. So we can't go up, go all the way around. We can always go down, but we can't go up. I had that backwards. Yep. So anyway, okay. So there we go. Is there anyone here? I got, I got a rise, everybody. Is there anybody here that would like to speak in regards to the tax rate?
Shannon Brooks.
I got a rise.
I'm going to say that perked everybody right up, didn't it?
I should have seen if you was paying attention.
I think they're waiting now. I'm Shannon Brooks. I live at 1680 Standoff Road, Union Hall, Virginia, and I've been there a whole lot longer than 20 years, I'll tell you. I'm here to share a very unpopular opinion. I'm in favor of the tax increases. I'm going to tell you why. Because I believe that we need to continue investing. to tell you why. Because I believe that we need to continue investing in Franklin County, in Franklin County schools, in Franklin County county, and in the staff of both of those. The proposed tax increases are modest increases, and they carry big impacts with them for a lot of people in this county, whether they realize it or not. Franklin County understands as well, as your school division does, the importance of investing in people. And if you want to keep people loyal to Franklin County, you have to reward loyalty. You have to show willingness to invest in the people that are investing in you and in your county. So who are these people, anyway, that we're talking about? Well, I'll tell you. We're your teachers, but we're also your coaches, nurses, counselors, advisors, guides, mediators, role models. We do double duty as peace officers, custodians, cafeteria workers, transportation. We're the shoulder to cry on, the motivator, the life coach, the inspirational speaker, and from time to time, we're your accountability buddy. And that's just in the classroom. Outside the classroom, we are vital members of your community. 1,200 of us are vital members of your communities. We're your next-door neighbors. We're the ones you count on to pet sit, plant sit, elder sit, and babysit. We're the people you can count on to keep your community safe, quiet, and the kind of places that other people want to live. We're at your soccer games, basketball games, cheer competitions, band trips, theater showcases, and everywhere else you go, we're there, too, because we live here and we like it here. We're the customers in your shops, in your boutiques, in your stores, salons, restaurants, dealerships, offices, and your waiting rooms. We invest literally in your communities. We're the volunteers at your animal shelters, warming shelters, emergency shelters, soup kitchens, donation facilities, ride shares, meals on wheels, and every service agency in this county in between. We're at every one of your folk festivals, food festivals, street fest, fall fest, wine fest, court days, field days, opening day, first day, holiday, last day, fishing derby, egg hunt, turkey shoot, professional wrestling match, tractor pull, mud bog, parade, bingo night, movie night, hoedown, uptown, downtown, and every hometown event this county hosts. And we're glad to be there, because we believe in Franklin County. When you lose us to neighboring divisions, you lose more than just teachers. You lose all that we are and all that we bring to your communities, our communities, our county. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thomas McDevitt.
My name is Thomas McDevitt, 71 Moonlight Cove. I'm going to say this again, no more taxes. And I don't need to say anything more than that, just that I am on a fixed income. I can't afford anymore. It's been costing me $1,000 a month for electricity for my homes, and it's just ridiculous. And you didn't do anything to help me about the electricity, and you allow them to put three fees on there that are exact same thing, and they, they need to go away. And the dam belongs to the people, because we're the ones that pay for it in our personal property taxes, and that's a, that's another scam, is personal property. When you, and I said it before, and I'll say it again, when you say it out loud, it sounds illegal. And they've, they've found enough money in, in Washington, DC, to where it can pay for everything we got here. So ask them for some money. Thank you.
She doesn't want to speak.
Oh, she don't want to speak?
Ed Saunders.
How are you guys all doing tonight? My name's Ed Saunders. I live at 245 Nature Zone Road in Farham. A familiar face for most of you, I imagine. Unlike a lot of the folks here tonight, I am not going to complain about how high the taxes are. I am, however, going to complain about the ROI. I've lived in places where the taxes are a lot higher than they are here. But we had buses that ran consistently. You know, I saw that we just recently had issues with shortages in buses. We had EMS that was fully staffed and full-time. We had parks in every small rural community. Not that I'm sore. I think if you're going to continue raising taxes, you have to show people that their money is going to things that directly benefit them. I think if I said the word Summit View, everybody behind me would moan. I know, case in point, I know that's a sore point for a lot of folks in this community, and, you know, I was raised, if you're investing in something and you put money into it and it doesn't give you dividends, you stop paying money into it. That's why I don't gamble. It's one of those things that I feel like those resources and those manpowers, because I know the staff at the county puts a lot of energy and a lot of effort into trying to bring folks into this community. Mr. Whitlow said last month that 80% of all new job creation is done by companies that are already in this county. So for a 20% ROI on new jobs, especially the low-paying jobs that are going to come with manufacturing, I don't see the investment as a good way to spend the county's money. I'd rather see it going to making sure we have buses that run on time, making sure we have resources for EMS and stuff like that. I think that is a much better way to spend our money. And, you know, I, I'm not in the position you guys are. I know you're juggling a lot, but I personally, as a consumer in this town, in this community, I know a lot of folks are struggling right now, especially with the cost of AEP, and no one's doing anything about that. Everybody's just going about it as it is. We are struggling in, as a community, and you guys can do a lot of different things to affect more cost-effective measures that don't hurt the people that are struggling the hardest. You could raise taxes on, you know, sailboats and RVs and things that are luxury items. You don't have to take something where people have the property that they were given by their parents or whatever. You don't have to tax that. You should be taxing things that are absolute luxury items. And then meals tax, which I'll come back up here for that. I think when you have so many small businesses that are restaurants, it's one of the best things that we have in this community. We have such a wide array of restaurants here, and they're all small businesses that employ people in this community. Jose's just opened up in Farham, and it has been non-stop people through that door. It's one of the best ways to employ people in this county and to bring some joy to folks in this county. I appreciate your guys' time. Thank you so much.
David Rosendez, 1530 Buffalo Ridge Road Firm. Just, you know, again, kind of echoing last year, man. Weren't we just here talking about raising taxes and money? There's a lot of us struggling. There's a lot of people struggling. And raising personal property taxes and my business machines, man, I've had the roughest winter. I'm about out of business. I'm about broke, done. And, you know, you want to raise more on my old machines, and I got to pay? Well, that's what we're reading, you know. And, and homes. I live in a mobile home. Y'all want to raise mobile home, but now you're going to raise my land tax also, my real estate, and my machines and my vehicles. It's just, you know, there's a lot of us struggling, the whole country, whatever, all this stuff going on. Let's find ways to settle down. Last year, we said we weren't going to do certain things. No offense to the town of Rocky Mountain, but we weren't going to fund the fire truck. Then we wind up funding a lot more than what was even offered that was turned down, and, you know, we just keep spending money, spending money. And honestly, a lot of the stuff that we spend money on does not benefit me or my family any kind of way. And, you know, so more or less, that's what I'm saying. I mean, we need to tighten up like everybody else is doing and having to do, and figure it out, do a little less something. I want Rocky Mountain to slow down on growing. A lot of people and a lot of my comments agree. We, we don't want the city. Go to Rona, go wherever, if that's what you want. But, you know, let's stay simple, let's stay hometown, and try to keep the big corporations out, and just tighten up somehow, you know. But anyways, I'm going to give the rest of my time to someone else that can talk better. Thank you.
Hello. My name is John Bolton. I live at 155 10th Street, Rocky Mountain, Virginia. I'm here to echo the words of my friends and colleagues who support the new budget, excuse me, that includes reasonable tax increases and allows for the public school system to implement, implement the step increases that we have all earned. I teach English at Franklin County High School. I was hired six years ago, right out of college, and I moved here without really knowing much about this community. I think I'd been to The Harvester twice, and that was about it. But I took a chance, I moved right out here, I was welcomed in immediately. I got married, we bought a house, and we've created, excuse me, we've created a life here. Obviously, we struggle financially, everybody does, but these small changes can bring a lot of stability and balance to our lives. Again, I urge you to implement this budget, because I've really enjoyed living and teaching here. I sincerely hope that I can afford to continue to do so. Thank you all very much, and I apologize for being so nervous.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Lori Betterton.
Hello, I am Lori Betterton on 3658 Green Level Road in Rocky Mountain. I just wanted to let you know that I'm a veteran teacher of 20 years in the Special Education Department. And I'm very pleased that the boards have made significant strides over the past few years. And my simple message is this, do not let me down.
Ma'am, were you speaking to that mic?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Can you not hear?
There you, there you go.
Okay. Do I have to restart?
No, ma'am, that's fine.
So my simple message is this, just do not let me down. Don't let my family down. Don't let my colleagues down. Many a teacher has stayed well, because we are Franklin County. And I'm asking you to support the manageable tax increases that are proposed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rain Peacock. Rain Peacock.
I'll try again. I'm just going to, once again, say, the taxes are increasing...
Ma'am, I need you to state your name and address, please.
My name is Rain Peacock. 24 East College Street, Rocky Mountain.
Thank you.
Don't see what you're doing. Anyway, the taxes really do not need to go up. People are struggling, and I hear everybody supporting the budget and increases. And I appreciate everybody wants a raise. But, you know, solving a problem isn't just throwing people and money at it. It never solves anything. Everybody's got to work harder. And everything in this country and this county and this world right now is top-heavy. There's too many chiefs and not enough Indians. Got to tighten our belts and slow this term down. And I also, as far as public safety, adding more money to them, I think that's a fabulous idea. But you know, ambulance ride for two miles, you know what that costs? $732 for two miles. Something's wrong. There's way too much money floating around, and it's not making any sense. Thank you.
Amos Denton, Malkin Bird Road, Boomsfield, Virginia. A penny a year, a penny last year, a penny this year, two pennies this year. It can always go up, but it can't go down. Ladies and gentlemen, here we are again, talking about taxes, raising taxes, creating new taxes to support our spending habits in this county. I have some questions that I think this board should answer before we even think about raising more taxes in this county. Yes, as everybody said, everybody's struggling, not just in this county, everywhere, all across this nation. There's people having to make hard decisions in this county, whether they're going to feed their kids, whether they're going to pay their taxes. We have $2 million that ain't been paid this year from last year. You think that's because people in this county don't want to pay taxes? No, that's not the reason. They're trying to decide whether to keep the lights on, feed their kids, or write y'all a check. We do need to invest in this county, but we can invest in this county without raising taxes, I feel. We were sold a pipeline running through this county that would generate all kinds of revenue. That's what we were told. During construction, there's going to be all kinds of taxes from personal property taxes of their equipment. Then after it was in service, there's going to be a ad valorem tax every year that we were going to get paid. Where's that money at? Don't, I mean, I ain't heard nothing about that money. Y'all want more money? Y'all want two pennies this year, probably two pennies next year? We have close to $40 million sitting in a bank account. Don't you think we could use some of that before we raise taxes on people that can't afford it? I mean, somebody's collecting interest on it. This county is. What's the citizens that paid that money getting? Nothing. We spent $5 million on a model craft building. Next year, we're going to have to raise five cents, five pennies next year for $40 million to redo it into a building that we can use? I don't know. We got two schools sitting empty in this county. Can we use them for something instead of spending a bunch of money on a new building? Hopefully, maybe. We don't have no dumpsters left in the outreaches of this county. They're all gone. And the people that are having to work overtime to pay the taxes, they can't get to the collection sites before the gates are shut. I can't exactly throw trash over the gate. We have new buses that got chains on. That's $2,000 per wheel for them chains. I ain't seen a bus on the road in a hard rainstorm, much less in the snow. We got natural gas pipeline coming through here. Did we look into natural gas buses? 30% less on maintenance over the life of the bus, but I see a lot of new buses. They all seem to be diesel. I feel like there's a lot of decisions that could be made to keep our tax money in the right direction before we raise them. Thank you all.
That's all I have signed up for, on the tax rate.
Anyone else here wishes to speak to the tax rate? Come forward, ma'am. State your name and address.
Rachel Wright, 3004 Fork Mountain Road, Rocky Mountain. My thing with the tax rate is, what are we doing with all the money that we already have? We have so much issues with public safety and the budget that is not straight, people not getting paid for the work that they've already done. But yet, here we are still asking for more money and more taxes when stuff now is not being handled. Fork Mountain Road Fire Department and Rescue Squad is not being staffed, but yet, here we are still asking for more money, more money. But we had the money for it. Like, where is the money going? Like, I don't know. And then when you call 911, sorry, I'm not a public speaker. When you call 911, they tell you they're on the way. That is their number-one thing. They're on the way, they're on the way. 25 minutes later, they're coming from Anita, they're not on the way. If you would have known from the get-go when you called 911 that they were 25 minutes away, you would have just threw them in the vehicle and drove to the hospital yourself. But instead, they're just going to keep saying they're on the way. Why is that a thing? Why is that just to get more money out of us, just to make sure that we're going to use that ambulance so they can just charge us more instead of letting us take our own loved ones to the hospital with the Fork Mountain issue? Yeah. I'm 100% against the tax when we can't figure out what's going on now, like what's already happened. So, yep. Thank you.
Come forward, please.
My name's George Garrett Gish. I live at 2914 Eton Road. I'm not a public speaker. I don't get up and do this kind of stuff. But I can tell you right off, I don't like taxes. Never have. But according to the Bible, you do have to pay taxes, pointed out by my grandmother. But I think it's important that the citizens know where our taxes are going. And, you know, when I get a receipt from a restaurant, I know what I'm getting. You know, when we pay our... You know, when we pay our taxes, we don't know where they're going. We just trust that y'all are putting them in the right places. So, I'm a volunteer firefighter for Burnt Chindi, and I don't run every call, but I try and go to the ones that I can. And our budget is being cut, I guess. We're trying to raise the funds to do what is necessary for our department, and, I don't know, I just, I think it's necessary for us to know where our taxes are going. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your service, too. Anyone else? All right. I'm gonna open it up now to the two cents on the meals tax. Madam Clark, you got anyone signed up for that?
Thomas McDevit.
Back when I was a kid, my name's Thomas McDevit, I live at 71 Moonlight Cove. Back when I was a kid, there was no such thing as taxes on food at all, let alone preparing it, and it's another thing that needs to go, just take all of it off of there. Why do you need to collect money for somebody else to prepare a meal for us? I didn't see you there to help pay for the food or fix the food, so it's something else that just needs to go away completely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ed Saunders?
Hello, again. My name's Ed Saunders, 245 Nature Zone Road, Fairham, Virginia. I wanna speak to the meals tax. You know, there are a lot of folks that work really hard out here. When I was growing up, my parents both worked a ton of hours. I stayed with my grandparents most of the time, but every once in a while, when they would get their paycheck, we would go to a restaurant and we would have dinner. That was one of the few small luxuries I had growing up. And when you make it harder on folks here, you make it harder for the small businesses that are, that are having those customers, I just don't understand it. You know, it's hard enough, and taking one of the few luxuries and making it even more expensive when everything already costs so damn much, I just, I ask you guys, please not to. It's gonna hurt local businesses, it's gonna hurt local families, so, appreciate it.
Rain Peeker?
All right, we'll try again. My name's Rain Peeker, 24 East College Street, Rocky Mount, and I'm gonna try to follow this pattern here this time. Anyway, again, we'll say surplus. There's a surplus, so do we really need to increase the taxes? Also, I know there's a lot of grants and surpluses. There's surplus. You guys are getting grants for everything, so do we need to really increase the taxes some more? Additionally, I know that the housing market is booming in Rocky Mount. Nothing's staying on the market, and the older people are checking out, and people are buying those houses and refurbishing them and selling them for double what they're paying. So y'all are getting plenty of money there. No more increase on food taxes, or any more taxes for us at all. And additionally, apparently, you guys have a boss? Is that boss paid? Do we need more taxes to pay that boss also? I don't get it. You guys are elected, and somebody that's not elected is your boss? Hmm, I wonder. Okay, and the last thing I have is, when you started the hearing, you started it with a threat. I don't like that a bit. You told somebody wasn't nice, you were gonna have them removed. That's crazy talk here in Rocky Mount. Thank you very much, you guys.
Amos Denton?
One more time, I'll read my first. Amos Denton, Malkin Bird Road, Boons Mill. The tax part, I don't mind. It's a necessary evil, we all gotta understand that. It takes money to run things. The meals tax, I do mind. The mom-and-pop's restaurants out in the county, the little tiny places at Sago, and the gas station, the Boons Mill Restaurants, the Callaway, that's the ones that are gonna feel it. Not, the people traveling down 220 corridor, they're not gonna pay the majority of that tax. The majority of that tax is gonna be felt by the single mom that's rushing to get home from work, to take her kids to soccer, grab supper on the way home. That, that's who's gonna feel that tax, that's who's gonna pay the most of that tax. The families in this county, they're burdened. I feel it, I see it, all of y'all gotta see it. Financial assistance, government-wise, has tripled in the last few years in this county. That, that, that's government-wise. Now, go out to your constituents, 'cause there's several private people that run food closets out of their own pockets. Ask them what they've seen in the last few years. That, we have teachers in this county that are living in their cars 'cause they can't afford housing. That's, that's who the meals tax is gonna hit, that have to go grab something to eat at night. Meals tax is not, that's not a fix-all, that's a backhand to the face of the people that can't afford it. I mean, most, there's a lot of us that can't afford it. I'm sure all y'all will never fill a meals tax. I won't fill a meals tax, but there's a lot of people I know that will fill a meals tax. And I feel like, look, if you wanna raise taxes, be transparent about it, raise taxes, raise it another penny, but don't, don't raise taxes on food, that's a necessity. I mean, if you're gonna raise taxes on food, like, what are you gonna raise taxes on water next? I mean, people, that, that's stuff that people feel, and I, I just don't like the fact that taxing food is not the way to go. I was here a couple of years ago when y'all were talking about, you know, doing the reassessing the houses, and members of this board said, well, at least we're not raising the meals tax like the mayor in Rocky Mount did. Within two years, y'all turned around and following suit. What'd y'all see? Oh, he got by with it, let me try. Is that, I mean, is that what happened? 'Cause I firmly felt like y'all were totally against it at that point. It didn't take very long for, all of a sudden, it comes up again. Let's find other ways to get our money instead of taxing people's food. Thank y'all.
That's all I have.
Anyone else here wish to speak for the meals tax? Come forward, please, state your name.
Thad Montgomery, 1120 Peters Pike Road in Wurts, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I don't envy ya. I've sat on your side of the desk before on, on the other board in the county, so, excuse me. Wouldn't it be nice if we had all the money that we needed to do all the things we wanna do without raising taxes? We can do that. The entrepreneur spirit is alive and well in Franklin County, it's everywhere, but the county gets in the way, and we have problems with, with doing the things we wanna do and creating the kinda jobs and bringing kinda GDP into Franklin County that we won't because we have honest regulations. So, my suggestion is, let's have some economic development with the businesses that are already here. Thank you.
Anyone else? Come forward, please.
Sorry, I'm short. Samantha Johnson, 5955 Virgil HQ Highway, Rocky Mount. I'm, this year, starting my own business. I'm gonna be a mom-and-pop, and what you guys are doing is not gonna help people like me, who are like, you know what, let's invest back into Rocky Mount. I've driven for 26 years to Roanoke because I couldn't find a good job here, so I went outside of Franklin County. So I looked into Franklin County and said, you know what, I need to invest back into here, 'cause this is where I've always been raised. I have no issue giving back to the schools, you know, fixing the roads, taking care of Franklin County, but you guys have wasted so much money on, look at the park right down on 220. There's one business there. It's lit up like Fort Knox every night that I come home, and that is money to me wasted. Buying all this land that's nothing been done is wasting. You, you're taking away from, from the mom-and-pops, you're squeezing these people dry, you're not helping with the AEP. My bill was 800 bucks, and I'm not even half, home half the time. So I think y'all need to go back and relook at what you're spending your money on, because it's not going to the right places, and you need to start taking care of these people who voted you in. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to come and speak to the meals tax? Come forward, come forward, please.
Hey, you guys. John Greer, 1530 Buffalo Ridge Road, Fairham. I've served many, many of you guys in some of the local restaurants here in this county, and I'm telling you right now, like, you wanna raise the meals tax, to come up with some extra money to tax the people of Franklin County, they can't afford it. They can't afford it. The people who are going to the restaurants are some of our older people, and they're now getting water instead of coffee because they can't afford it. They don't have programs. What are you doing as Franklin County to offer anything to the restaurants here? We're paying taxes, and we're getting nothing back as a people. I don't think you've heard very many people that disagree that, you know, there is a tax. The problem is how we're spending that tax. What are you giving us back as a community? What are we getting as a community out of that? We keep paying up. You promised us you weren't raising taxes. Last year, when you went through telling us we were all making $64,000 a year as an average. Anyone? Anyone?
Ma'am, you need to-
How we do that as an average, I don't know. I just wish that you guys would kind of sit back for a minute, take a look back. As a county, as a citizen of Franklin County, we're drained, we're drained. Take a look at your budget like a single parent instead of like a teenager with their first paycheck. Okay, 'cause some of the things that we're spending money on isn't necessities. Look at each one of these departments, we're throwing away money on, oh, we're advertising for this, or we're gonna advertise for that. What are the outcomes of these advertisements? What, we're not seeing any productivity. We're driving through town, and there's nothing to do. You know, we're a high tourism area with nowhere to take our kids other than a park, you know, or a bar. Yes, we got plenty of bars, but we don't have very much to do with our kids. We're, we're lost here. We're sitting here working 60-hour weeks and can't dump our trash anymore. I mean, that, it's a problem, and I just wish you would think about that when you think about a meals tax. You're taxing a necessity there. You're taxing food. There are elderly people here who have no partner, no kids, to bring them food, that are eating in our restaurants, that can't afford to eat there anymore. They're coming in two nights a week, and God knows who's feeding them the rest of the week. And it's something to think about and consider with the whole tax. Thank you.
Is there anyone, anyone else here like to, wish to speak to the meals tax? If you'd come forward, sir.
Good evening. I'm Steve Yates, I live at 2055 Old Salem School Road in Union Hall. I think that there's a fallacy here when you start looking at budgets and you wanna increase the meal tax. The meal tax isn't a seasonal tax, whereas restaurants on the lake, they do well during the season. When the season's over, they don't do very well. The people in this room, day in and day out, they're not on the lake. They might wanna go to the lake and have a nice meal, but you're taxing them whether they eat at a Wendy's or if they go to the lake. I, I, I really feel that it's irresponsible to try to propose not only a property tax and a meal tax at the same time, especially a year after the assessments came through and, and many, many people got taxed and got hurt bad. And, and, and they tried to protest those assessments, and the majority of people lost. I was fortunate, I won, because I had gone through that process before, because I came from a big city. I, I think it's not fair. I understand that with budgets, you need to pay people better, I'm all for it, but I would propose that you look at any capital expenditure and, and put a freeze on it for 365 days. And at the end of that 365 days, if you still need that capital expenditure, then spend the money. If you don't, use that money somewhere else. You have difficult decisions to make that affect all different classes of people. I live on the lake, can I afford a restaurant tax? Absolutely, I can. But it's not fair to these people. Now, if you wanna, if you wanna propose, and I don't even know if it's legal, if you wanna propose taxing specific areas, maybe that's a consideration. If you wanna go after the tourists and you wanna tax the lake, tax the lake, believe these people alone. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak to the tax rate? Come forward, please.
Sue McDavid, 71 Moonlight Cove. There are more vape shops in this town, there are restaurants in this town. Who allows vape shops in this town? Do they get taxed? That's all I have to say.
Anyone else? Come forward, ma'am.
My name is Teresa Pagan. I live at 877 Hatchet Creek Lane. Lived in Franklin County just about my whole life, and I just turned 66. I wasn't gonna get up here and speak because I don't like to get up and speak unprepared, but I haven't heard this addressed, so I wanna bring it up. I was in the hub restaurant the other day, and one of the ladies who was a waitstaff, she was a waitress, someone had come in and had ate, and she had done real good. I watch waitstaff, I like a good waitress or a waiter. And the person that left didn't leave a tip, and you could tell by her expression how disappointed she was. From what I understand, people who wait tables, whether they're a waiter or a waitress, they don't make minimum wage, they make a very low hourly rate, and they depend on tips for their survival, for their living, for their livelihood. And it just seems like to me that you guys, and I'm not pointing any fingers at anyone, but this meals tax is taking away from their income, because there's a lot of people that go out to eat, and I love to go out to eat, you can ask my husband, every Sunday, he's gonna take me out to eat, 'cause I don't wanna cook on Sunday. But I like to leave a good tip, and there are people, not all people, but there are some people who, with a high meals tax on the meal, that they're belly scraping by, wanting to go out to eat, can afford, and if you add the meals tax, it's gonna take away from the tip they're gonna be able to leave to their servers. So I'm here to speak up for the waiters and the waitresses who depend on their tips. Don't take away from their income by adding a meals tax, which would make the difference in whether someone could leave a good tip or not. Not everybody is affected by that. We, thank God, can leave a decent tip and pay the meals tax, but there are people out there that can't. So I just ask you to think about them, think about the waiters and the waitresses who depend on that income, and if you put a large meals tax, people will stop going out to eat, and they'll pay the meals tax and, and take away from their tip, so I'm here to speak for them. Thank you. Thank you.
Ma'am, you, you came up a while ago.
I did not come prepared this time. I have files at the office from all the times I've been here.
Ma'am, I need to get you to station.
I'm sorry. Deborah Russell, uh, and I live at 10510 Virgil Good Highway, Rocky Mount. But me and my family own Jerry Queen's and Bojangles here in the county and town. And y'all seem to don't understand that, you know, John Doe that comes in, gets that sausage biscuit and coffee every day, and he's on a fixed income, or whatever, you know, meal they choose to get, and it goes up, they stop coming as often. They may come one day a week or two days a week, they don't come four or five. And some of them, they don't have anybody else to cook for or anything. But if, you, I know y'all think it's just a few cents. It adds up, and everybody's not as fortunate as I or y'all that can pay that meals tax. So you just need to think about, why, why have to pick on the restaurant industry? Like they're saying, why not a luxury industry? Is there somebody else y'all can pick on, instead of restaurants? Because we've had it up to here. And that's all I got to say.
Anyone else here wish to speak to the meals tax, before we close? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I think what we'll do at this point is take a 10-minute break, and then we'll come back and, uh, we'll talk amongst ourselves. Thank you all for being here. Okay, it's good. Glad some of you stayed to see what's going on. We're just going to have a, a little talk. The decision will not be made until next Tuesday. We're just going to talk amongst ourselves for a little bit, and to see where, uh, see everybody's feelings and everything. Now, Mr. Tatum, he's going to have to leave here in a minute and go to work, but he drew up a paper, and we've all got a copy of that, maybe, uh, uh, I think, can we take, can we take this paper and lay it down there, and it show up on them screens?
He has a copy.
Okay, can you do that, and put that up our own screen? And, uh, there you go. Mr. Tatum, you go ahead, sir.
All right. Um, a couple of weeks ago, I had some time to sit down, and I, as I try to do every year with the budget, I go through line item by line item. And it's not the second guest staff, but I like to go through and just evaluate and review things for myself. And I've heard a lot of you speaking here tonight, and I couldn't agree with you more. I think that, uh, people in Franklin County are hurting. Uh, cost going up, inflation over the last several years have been painful at best. And this year, for me, is not the year that we need to raise taxes. I've said that before, and I say it again. Um, you know, we, the original budget that was proposed to us had a, a one penny recommended tax increase, which is roughly a million dollars. And we were able, by renegotiating, redoing our insurance for the county, we were able to save that million dollars. I went through the budget, and this is just a few items I went through, and on the, you can see the category on the side, and then you see where it says requested. That requested segment is what was actually requested by the department. The next line is staff proposal. And then you see the line that says my proposal, and then on the very end, you can see the savings that we can make, just by making these minor cuts in these, these areas here. And these are just a few. Um, I'm, these are some of my ideas, this is not reflective of the board, this is Tim Tatum speaking. Uh, for instance, if you go down, the sheriff wages, sheriff full-time wages, he put in a request this year for 4.5 million dollars for, uh, full-time salaries, and the reason being, he's like everyone else, he's got to be competitive with our surrounding jurisdictions. If not, all we are is a training ground for all the other jurisdictions. Staff, uh, and I know they, they built in some, in a couple of years, we're going to have to come up with the full funding for the SROs. So staff recommended giving 4.7 million dollars, which was more than the sheriff had actually requested. My recommendations, we go ahead, we cut that back, we go 4.7, which is $50,000 less than what was, uh, proposed by staff, but yet it's still more than what the sheriff asked for. And you say, well, 50, $50,000 in an almost $200 million budget is, is not a lot of money. No, it's not. But if you do that enough, those numbers count up. And you can see, um, one up here, uh, you know, the sheriff asked for six, uh, he asked for $780,000 for new vehicles. Yep, vehicles break down, the, police vehicles have to be replaced, we understand that. But if we just cut back, and your, and staff proposal was 600,000, my, my recommendation, cut it back a little more, save 25,000 more. By doing that, then for in-car cameras, you don't need as much, if you cut out one vehicle, and that's what we'd be cutting out, basically one vehicle, you don't need as many of cameras and radios for the vehicle. So you save a little bit there, there's a trickle-down effect. And, um, this was just some ideas that I, I had, and I wanted to share with the other board members. If all of us take time and go through and find these little cuts, these are cuts, and some of them are not cuts at all, some of them are just decreases in the amount of increase. I'm sure all of you, if you listen to our federal government, the way they operate, if they cut the amount of increase, even though it's still going up, one side says it's a cut, and one side says it's not. Well, I'm, I'm telling you, some of these here are still increases, yet they're a cut in the amount of decrease. Uh, this was just some ideas I had to try to cut back, and, and you can see here, this is 232,000 dollars, that's roughly about half of what the two penny meals tax would generate for the county. So a little bit more work, a little bit more tweaking, and I think we can cut that other half out. Me personally, I do not think it's the time to raise taxes this year, after the debacle we had last year over the reassessments with the property. Something has to be done. Um, and, you know, people are hurting. Like I said, these are just my ideas. Am I saying they're perfect? No. Could we do more in some of them? Absolutely. But just a challenge, throwing it out there, fellas, ladies. Um, I think we all need to roll up our sleeves and, um, and make sure that we're being as prudent as we can with the people's budget. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Mr. Tatum. Just to let everybody know, because we've been told, uh, well, some people alluded to how much did we study and look. We, staff presents this book, and in this book, it's got every request that every department says that they need and what they've asked for. And it, it's their budget that's done, and it comes to staff, and then we got it. That entire book that I just showed you is online, you can go on the county website, and you can look up, you can look up that book and see everything that has been requested. And so, and if you don't have, I know a lot of people, because of the rule and its rule-ness of this county, you can go to the library and do it, because they got the computers at the county library. And you can go to the library and, and look the same thing up. And then there's hotspots throughout the counties, around the school, that if you go with your, your laptops, uh, your cell phones, if you've got that, that you can look up on that as well. But it, it is out there for you to look at if you want to see it. All right, now, before we go any further, I'm going to open it up to the board to see if any of the board members have anything they want to say or add to tonight's, uh, meeting, board meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'll go first. Thank you all for staying. Um, I take the ability to tax very seriously, I think my colleagues up here will tell you that, uh, every year. A, as far as this year's budget, I don't know if you caught in Mr. Brian Carter's presentation, we redid the county's insurance this year, which saved a million dollars to the county. So as far as I'm concerned, that takes care of the one cent tax increase right there. Uh, as far as this meals tax, I agree with a lot of the comments in the audience. I think it's a regressive tax, I think it hurts small business, and I am not in favor of all with the meals tax. Uh, if you all, my colleagues, vote for a tax increase, I would ask at this time that whoever makes that motion, put an addendum onto that, that when we get the ad valorem tax money from Mountain Valley Pipeline, which will be in the neighborhood of 1 to 3 million dollars, we rebate that tax back to the citizens, if you all agree to this one cent tax increase. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? No. The only thing that I, I want to add, uh, you're not going to like this, but I am in favor of the one cent tax increase, not in favor of two cent, because of the savings that was done and found over the insurance. And the reason that I say that I think we need the one cent tax increase, it really, really bothers me that we have become, we, Franklin County has become a training ground. Folks are coming here and getting their training, getting, getting their education in, in different things, getting, learning how to do that, and you, you, right out there, the taxpayers paying for that. And then they're going to other places and getting better-paying jobs, and getting different jobs. And that's not fair. So we need, we need to make sure that our pay is equal, so that they don't go nowhere else, that we, we can compete with the other counties. Now, you know, you, you can agree or disagree, but that's what's happening. That's what's going on. Uh, I remember my, my, uh, my career was in law enforcement. And when I went, when I went, first went to work, uh, in law enforcement, you couldn't hardly buy, beg, or borrow, steal a job with the state police. And then, and then when you, you did get one on with the state police, you had to go at that time to a 12-week academy. And then it went on up to, uh, you know, and they added two or three weeks here, two or three weeks there. And so, the first academy that I went to, a local academy, was four weeks, then it went to 10 weeks, and now, and now I'm pretty sure it's up, I know it is, it's up to 26 weeks. Local, the state police now, uh, they offered me, they, they did offer me a job, and when I got, would come out of the state police academy, at that time, they said I'd have to go to Northern Virginia on Eastern Shore. I didn't want to go to either one of them. I done spent all the time on the Eastern Shore I wanted to, when I was in service. And I didn't want, I didn't want to go back down there. Now, they are, they had, and you, you all know that, you gentlemen that's in here, know that, some of you ladies as well, that they, uh, they did shift premiums and job premiums wherever you was at. But I didn't want that. So then, then they said, well, some of these guys that went, uh, say I got a, a local, a job here and went to a local academy, if I got a job at the state police, then I had to go back to the state police academy all over again. Today, they don't do that. You come back and you go to a local academy, I think it's like eight weeks, is what I was told just the other day. You go back to school for like eight weeks, and that's to learn how to do the state police way of doing things. Now, before, they went through everything, every code in the book. Now, that's what I've been told. So, but we have become a training ground, you and I, have become, our taxes have become training grounds. And that's why I like to see us to at least be able to compete with our pay and with our salaries of our adjoining counties. And that's why you're going to hear me say that I'm going to be in favor of that one cent tax, not two cent, because the county administrator and his staff, they found that, uh, there, uh, that million dollars from savings that came out of the renegotiating with Blue Cross and Blue Shield. All right, so with that being said, nobody else had anything to say, so that, so, uh, I wanted to ask each one of the members here, uh, do you want to have a work session? Do we think, do you think we need a work session Thursday? Uh, yes or no?
Yes.
How many wants to see a work session, raise their hand.
Mr. Tatum said he wanted one as well, I asked him before.
He did?
Yes.
All right, so there's, who, who wants to see a work session? One, two, and Tatum is three. Who doesn't think we need one? It's four to three. We'll see y'all, we will adjourn until, uh, next Tuesday. Next Tuesday, we'll come in, next Tuesday at, do we have, at 3 o'clock, we don't have broadband next Tuesday, do we? We don't have broadband, all right? So we will adjourn until next Tuesday, and the date of that Tuesday, Madam Clerk, is, I'm sorry, ma'am.
April 15.
April 15. All right, you all have a good week.